I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge led by Mrs. Tettis.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Before we begin, I need to appoint Mike S. Clark because Troy is absent tonight. All right, and our first item, we're going to have a public hearing on developer fees. We welcome public input on the consideration by the Board of Education of increasing developer fees. So, I'm opening the hearing. Who would like to speak on developer fees? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Okay, item F, adoption and approval of the agenda. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item G, special recognitions and presentations. This is our favorite part. Item one, the presentation of student of the month awards to two students from each of our secondary schools in the Palomino High School District for the month of November 2012. And how it works is I invite the student representatives from each of the schools to come up. They will announce, you know, who the students of the month are. They'll come up one at a time. You get to hear about their amazing accomplishments. And then we recognize the student's family for their support of their student. Then they go sit down, next student comes up, etc. So, we like this part because we have some amazing students in our district. So, first I'd like the representative from Kennelworth Junior High to come forward.
My name is Tuesday and I am a member of the Kennelworth Leadership Class. Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the November Student of the Month at Water River News.
Turn your face to the camera while we're hearing about you.
Eddie is an eighth grade student who has maintained a 3.2 grade point average at Kennelworth Junior High School. In addition to his hard work academically, Eddie enjoys playing baseball, which he did this summer with the travel team that played in Cooperstown, New York. During the 10 games his team played, Eddie hit an amazing 10 home runs. Eddie's teachers described him as unmotivated and industrious student with a pleasant personality. He does beyond the course requirements to the quantity and quality of his schoolwork. His teachers go on to say Eddie is a positive role model for all students. He is very well-liked and respected by classmates. When Eddie is not as cool, he likes to play baseball, which he has been doing for six years. He also enjoys playing basketball and hanging out with his friends. Eddie's favorite class is science because of the progress he gets to great in the class. After high school, Eddie wants to attend either Stanford University or the University of Oregon to earn a degree in business and baseball. Eddie's friends describe him as intelligent, athletic, humble, and cunning. His parents are very proud of him and he thinks he's doing a fantastic job. Congratulations, Eddie.
And if your family could be able to rise and be acknowledged for your support.
Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the November Student of the Month, Linda Rash. Linda is a gifted student who has maintained a 3.92 grade point average since the seventh grade. Linda's teachers describe her as a student who always gives her best effort in all of her tasks and activities. She always has a positive attitude and she's always personable and helpful in class. Linda is highly motivated. She completes all of her work with attention to detail that exceeds expectations. Linda's favorite class is Spanish because this class is fun, challenging, and she enjoys learning a different language. Outside of school, Linda enjoys playing baseball. Her favorite positions are to play our third base in shortstop. Linda's friends describe her as thoughtful, kind, fun, and intelligent. After high school, Linda plans to attend a college or university to study a topic to be named at a later date. Her parents are extremely proud of all of her accomplishments and very pleased at her recognition. Congratulations, Linda.
And our Palomino Junior High representatives.
I'm Whitney, president of Palomino Junior High. And Palomino Junior High's elected Grace Davis has been the November Student of the Month. A uniquely talented and all-around student, Grace Davis has been chosen as the November Student of the Month at Palomino Junior High School. Grace's teacher states Grace is a hard worker committed to doing well. She's creative, determined, dependable, meticulous, and thorough. Grace never gives up, continually striving to better herself in a humble way. As admitted Business Manager of the P J H S school yearbook, she's a selfless player, completing her work and finding ways to help others and enhance the team. Earning a 4.0 GPA while taking advanced English, Grace is on the honor roll and has earned the principal's Renaissance Gold Awards. Grace's smile lights up the room and adults and peers alike enjoy her intelligence and bright personality. Grace has many interests. She's very athletic, playing on the P J H S A C Y basketball team and P Y cell soccer. Coming from a close family, she enjoys playing tennis and riding bicycles together. She also enjoys babysitting and doing art projects. Grace loves animals and always has at least one dog to take care of. Future goals include finishing at the top of her high school class and attending the fourth-year university. She hopes to continue playing sports, including tennis and soccer in high school. Grandma Miller comments, "We have a very special relationship. Grace is sensitive, unselfish, thoughtful, humorous, creative, and has many friends with whom she shares activities and interests. She loves drama, singing, and dancing and is very good at sports. I'm very proud of Grace, the young woman she has become. Congratulations, Grace Davis."
And if your family could be able to rise and be acknowledged.
Hello, I'm Maria Bassett, Vice President of P J H S. Zachary Espona has been chosen as the November Student of the Month for November.
You can hold it for now.
A strong student and an extraordinary good person. Zachary Espona has been chosen for the Student of the Month for November. Zach is a star student maintaining a 4.0 GPA while enrolled in advanced classes at P J H S. He has placed first on the English Advanced Place in the test and is on the honor roll. Is a member of the Math Olympiad and has earned the principal's Renaissance Gold Awards. He has a bright, warm dynamic, generous and strong, yet humble personality. He is an extraordinarily smart, responsible, and dependable. Zach plays by example, exploring a calm confidence which all influences others to want to don him. Zach is respected and revered by all adding a positive enthusiasm to learning environment in our classroom. Zach has many interests and stays very in various activities. He attends youth group by his shirt on Friday nights and is present in the Jesus Club at our school. Zach plays basketball on a community and traveling team and is a member of the track team at P J H S. He enjoys spending time with his family, playing football with his brother, hunting with his dad, and helping with household tasks. Zach's future plans include doing well in school, attending college, and having a great job. That's friends state. Zachary enjoys reading, hunting, target shooting, and hanging out with family and friends. He is a hard worker at school and at home. Always open to new challenges. For example, last spring, he built a chicken coop for his baby chicks until they were old enough to be placed with the grownups. He is very close to his older sister and younger brother and always willing to help others. We are very proud of our son and believe he has a great future in front of him. Congratulations, Zachary Espona.
And if your family could be able to rise and be acknowledged. Okay, and our representative from Tulsa Grande High School.
My name is Chris Cole, I'm ASV president of Tulsa Grande High School. And our first student of the month is Gabby Fleishman. Gabriella Fleishman has a 4.28 GPA and is ranked fifth in her class. She's one of the editors-in-chief of the award-winning Gaucho Gazette, wrote, plays piano, and sings. She's applying for UC Santa Barbara, UC San Diego, Boston College, Northeastern, Boston University, and Columbia, and hopes to major in journalism or English with concentration in creative writing.
We would also like to congratulate Uchazo Garay as our November Student of the Month. Uchazo Garay was born in Barcelona, Spain, and moved to the United States when she was four. She's lived in many places, including Finland, Florida, New Hampshire, and Nevada. She has two sisters who are eight and 10, and one brother who is 16. Uchazo is fluent in Spanish. On her free time, Uchazo enjoys spending time with her family and friends, reading, hiking, listening to music, and taking pictures. She loves to eat and travel and hopes to one-day travel the world. A few locations she would like to visit in the future include Costa Rica, Greece, and Taiwan. Uchazo maintains a 4.83 grade point average. Her favorite classes have been chemistry and English. Uchazo is editor-in-chief of the Gaucho Gazette and considers journalism to be her favorite class this year. She has run varsity, cross-country for three years and tracks further. Every summer, Uchazo volunteers at a camp called Boost Camp for children who have motor disabilities like cerebral palsy and autism. At the camp, she assists in the therapy and care of the children as the volunteer coordinator and manager. She recruits volunteers and helps run the camp. Last summer, Uchazo worked for a month in a care facility for women who have mental impairments in majority of Spain. Uchazo also works as a respite caregiver for a 21-year-old woman with cerebral palsy. Uchazo will be inclined to UC Berkeley, UC Davis, UCLA, UC San Diego, UC Santa Barbara, UC, University of Washington, Northwestern, and Northeastern. She hopes to major in molecular biology, biochemistry, or psychobiology. In the future, Uchazo would like to attend medical school and pediatrics.
And if your family could be able to rise. And our representative from Palomino High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Higardner, I'm ASV president of Palomino High School. And Palomino High is very pleased to say that Jamie Sipich is our November Student of the Month. Jamie Sipich is a senior at Palomino High School. Jamie lives with her parents and her younger brother, who is a freshman. At school, Jamie's in both the concert band and the joust band. She's in French five and she is the French club president. After school, Jamie's on the girls' tennis team, the drill team, and she works part-time at a local restaurant. Her other hobbies include hiking, kayaking, reading, volunteering, and hanging out with friends. After Jamie graduates, she plans on attending a four-year college and getting a degree in nursing. Thank you, Jamie. And Palomino High's second Student of the Month is Ryan Douglas. Ryan has challenged himself in honors and M.E.P. classes throughout high school and is currently maintaining a 4.5 GPA. This year, he's the commissioner of rallies for ASV. He has run varsity, track, and cross-country every year since he was a freshman. This year will be his second year that he was team captain for both cross-country and the distance track teams. He has raced in the California State Cross-Country Meet twice and hopes to race there again this year. He has made it to the final round of the Meet of Champions two years in a row for track in the 1600 meter. His cross-country team has won the North Coast Section title twice and has kept the Sonoma County League title for the past eight years. Ryan has received the Outstanding Scholar-Athlete Award for every sport he has played and received the Harold McConaughey Community Achievement Award his sophomore and junior year. Ryan plans to attend a four-year college, either at UC or a private university, to study sports medicine, or environmental science. Thank you, Ryan.
What they didn't tell you is that he won the cross-country league finals last week. Okay, well now you know why that's our favorite part of the meeting. We just are so impressed with all of our students and the support they receive from their families because that makes a really big difference. So, we have a lot more stuff on the agenda, but my expectation is some of you may have homework that you have to get to or some other activities. So, we will take a very short recess if you need to sneak out, but everybody is welcome to stay, so. Do you want the lights turned down? I'm trying to get, I'm trying to calm her down. There, is that? Okay, I'd like to restart. And, I guess that's me. Our next presentation, Janice Obeado, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, will provide an introduction to the Common Core standards.
Hi, everybody, welcome. Tonight, we're going to talk very briefly about Common Core standards. The Common Core standards are the standards that were adopted recently, well, actually, a couple of years ago. So, I'll just start right in and review very briefly what the Common Core are. About four years ago, the National Government Association got together and decided that we really did need some new standards and that we needed national standards. So, they made a commitment, the governors made a commitment, to put together a set of national standards. The national standards have now been adopted by 42 states. Two states are not going to adopt them, Texas and Alaska. I almost asked you to guess who it was. Texas and Alaska will not be adopting. And the other states have adopted both the national standards, as we will know, the Common Core. They are called Common Core standards, and they're all a set of standards, which is a little crazy. When the states adopted the national standards, they were allowed to add 15% to that national standard. Although, we have some new information today that says that that 15% might be going away. So, 42 states across the United States will be testing and teaching these national standards called the Common Core. Why did the governors decide that this was important? They decided that, you've heard all of the input in the newspapers and in the news and all that, that kids are not ready. They're not prepared. They're going into remediation courses at college level. When they get to the college level, employers are saying that the kids don't have the skills that they need to be successful in the 21st century. So, that's really why the Common Core standards came about and why the governors started looking at this. They wanted to look at and build on the strengths that we know, that we've learned from the standards that we currently have. Our standards in California, where some of the models standards used to build the national standards, to build the Common Core standards, are standards in Massachusetts. Our standards are, our old standards as they stood are about 18% aligned with these new national standards. Then we added our 15%. We spent most of our 15% in mathematics. We also spent a little bit in handwriting and added handwriting in at second, third, and fourth grade because it wasn't in the national standards. The standards themselves are very clear and understandable. You can actually follow the skills developing across the standards from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. They're very consistent and very clear. The teachers, as they work with them and as we begin to roll them out, are very excited about them because of that, because of the clarity within them. They're modeled on the top-performing countries in the world. So, you hear about Singapore, you hear about Finland, and how high those kids score and how well the kids are prepared for the 21st century skills that they need. These standards build on and learn from those countries. Very strong application of knowledge. It's not so much facts and factoids, not so much trivial pursuit, but more application of knowledge. So, you know how to add, now let's apply it in some different kinds of life circumstances. And also higher-order thinking skills. Very much looking at analysis and synthesis of ideas, analyzing why things are alike, why they might be different, and then synthesizing into new products. Kids making new products. They are evidence-based, which is very important to all of us. So, what the Common Core really look at is they look at not so much, they look at what we're teaching. They look at the content of what we're teaching, not the how, of how we're going to teach it. That's coming in, and we'll talk about that in just a second. So, in English Language Arts, there's actually three sections. There are sections within each one of the big areas. But English Language Arts has this cross-reference with history, social science, science, and the technical subjects. So, that English Language Arts and the whole reading, in the area of reading, does not become just the purview of English, English in the 712, but it becomes reading across the curriculum. So, reading in history, social science, reading in science, reading in electives, and it's a different kind of reading. So, we are focusing much more on nonfiction texts. Right now, honestly, we probably spend 90% of our time in fiction, especially at the high school levels. Literature, reading good novels, all really good, good, strong literature and good background for students. But our employers and our colleges are saying that our students need to be able to read nonfiction. They need to be able to read technical manuals. They need to be able to follow a set of instructions to put things together. They need to be able to look at two pieces of literature and compare and contrast and find the themes across. So, we'll be looking at much more nonfiction texts, starting in the elementary schools, 50/50 nonfiction and fiction. And by the time the kids get through high school, it's 70/30. 70% nonfiction, 30% fiction. So, that's the first big shift. That's a huge shift for us. Content area literacy, where the kids are reading, learning how to read a lab report, learning how to write a lab report, learning how to pick apart technical information across those different genres and different content materials. Very much an increase in the complexity of the texts that the kids are reading. So, you'll see, as the standards go up across the grade levels, you'll see the complexity increase. And it begins now about fourth grade and ramps up through high school at a much higher level than what we're requiring students to read at right now. And it's really, really about looking across texts, looking for themes, looking for similarities and differences, a lot of analysis, a lot of text-based questions. Not so much what kids bring to text, but what they can pull out of text. That's a big difference. In writing, focusing on arguments, persuasion, and building academic vocabulary. So, it's a ramping up, a general in Language Arts, a general ramping up of what we're doing across the board. In mathematics, once again, it focuses across the grade levels from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And what we have here is a focus on the mathematical practices. This is what we want the kids to do. So, it's not so much learning the math facts and adding and subtracting, multiplying, dividing in these particular standards. That's there. But in these particular standards, it's about how kids approach mathematics and how they solve problems. So, looking at making sense of a problem and then really persevering, working it through, maybe looking at it from a couple of different points of view. Being able to construct a viable argument where I think that the answer to this question is seven. Why do you think it's seven? And being able to defend how you got there. And how, and critiquing other people. You got to seven, you got to seven this way. I got to seven, but I got to it that way. Can they both be right? Modeling mathematics and using models from real life to show students how mathematics can work in their everyday life. Using appropriate tools strategically, looking at calculators, computers, rulers, all of those kinds of things, and using them strategically, making sure that there's attention to precision. Looking for and making use of structures, hundreds charts. What are the structures behind hundreds charts? How can you use that to add, subtract, multiply, divide? Looking for patterns in repeated reasoning of things. So that the kids, it's not so much just that they can't do the math, but they're thinking about the math and they're thinking critically so that they can apply it in new situations. Behind it all lays the 21st century learning skills. And our 21st century skills are four. Communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. You'll find these in our classrooms today. When you go out and you visit our classrooms, you'll find them in our classrooms today. But it is the ramping up of using more collaborative structures within a classroom, using more communication so that the kids are not, it's not so much the teacher talking to the kids, but it's kids talking to kids, and students learning from students. The teachers becoming more of a guide for students in student learning. So, it's kind of a shift away from teachers standing in front, delivering knowledge, to helping kids become the sense makers of knowledge and teachers becoming more that guide for students. A lot of communication between students, the critical thinking, thinking about, is there another way to solve this? Can we see another way to do this? And creativity, that's that synthesis piece where they may be taking that and saying, okay, I can get to seven this way, but I can find five more ways to get to seven. Or can you find five more ways to get to seven? Just as a quick example. These are some of the modeling examples. And you can see that they actually are using things like planning a table tennis tournament for seven players. How are you going to do that? You've got four tables. You've got four tables, how are you going to set it up? So that the kids are applying that knowledge, the knowledge that they're bringing about mathematics to the real world. These are a couple of open-ended responses from math tests in Massachusetts. And it's a math and a reading comprehension example. And you can see in question eighteen there on the reading comprehension, based on the excerpt, explain what the things, what things the soldiers carry reveal about the soldiers' experience in Vietnam. So they have to read a text and bring out the knowledge that they're getting there and then synthesize that into what they think. The CST, which is our new exam, our exam that we're currently using, will be replaced in 2014-15. It will be placed by a national assessment called the Smarter Balance. You can see the grade levels that we'll be testing. Right now, second grade won't be tested. We don't know if that's going to stick or not. It might, it might not. The assessments will be at least forty percent computer-based on a computer. I will show you one of them right now. So this is what, this is one of the questions from the Smarter Balance. This is a math question. And if, we were right at the beginning of this, these guys actually swim. And the kids have to, five swimmers complete the fifty-meter race, the finish time for each swimmer is shown in video. So when the video plays, which it won't right now, the guy, these guys swim and it comes up with their times. And then explain how the results of the race would change if the race used a clock that rounded to the nearest ten. This is, guess what grade level?
Fourth.
No, it's not, it's not going to respond for me. It's a fourth grade question. This is a fourth grade question. So the kids will type their responses here into the computer. We gave the first, we were able to give a small trial at San Antonio two weeks ago. We actually gave the Smarter Balance to about fifteen kids. That particular test was one hundred percent on the computer because it was a little trial to see if it would work out. The kids, the kids who knew how to type took about an hour. The kids who didn't know how to type, another skill we're going to need to teach, took about an hour and a half. So we anticipate, we know that we'll be giving this for the first time in 1415. We don't know when we, right now, the plan is that we will give CST this year and next year and then Smarter Balance in 1415. We've been working to get ready for this and as we go forward now, we're going to be, as I said to the elementary principals, we've had our toes in the water, standing on our, on the beach with our toes in the water. And now the waves are starting to lap up to our ankles and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be a little bit deeper, maybe up to our waists. In K six, we're looking at, we're starting with mathematics and implementing the Smarter Balance in mathematics. Our goal is to have the curriculum aligned to the Smarter Balance for the thirteen-fourteen school year, to pilot everything and then make adjustments over the course of the thirteen-fourteen school year and be fully implemented for 1415 in mathematics. In the secondary, we're starting with writing across the curriculum because that's the place that people feel will make the biggest change, it's the biggest change that we need to make besides the nonfiction texts and that if we start there, we'll be a little bit ahead because the kids will be doing more performance-based assessment. We'll also be working with mathematics and mathematics committee will be starting right after the holidays at the seven-twelve level and we'll be looking at algebra and the whole core sequence for mathematics from seventh through twelfth grade and what that will look like in terms of Smarter Balance. Just sample tasks that we're putting into place over the course of the next two years. You got in your board packet, you got the blue one that we've been updating and this will continue to update. It will be posted on the Wiki if you want to go to the Wiki, if you want to keep up on what's going on, it's on the Wiki. And then I also gave you just an overview of the shifts that are happening. You'll be hearing a lot more about this over the course of the next two years. Questions?
Yeah, what has been the response? I'm assuming this is a lively topic at curriculum meetings, et cetera. What has been the response? I'm thinking there's a lot of English teachers that might not be digging, going to thirty percent.
Well, remember, it's not going to be just English teachers. There will also be history and science and those guys. The responses are generally very good. People are pretty excited about these because they make sense. It's the first time that the standards have really made sense. We had a discussion today with the elementary principals about are we going to choose power standards or not? Maybe we need to, maybe we don't need to because these make sense to people and they are appropriate for grade levels, even though they ramp up the rigor across the grade levels. So generally, the response has been very, very good. We do, we will have some things that we need to look at and not, the use of nonfiction texts is one of those things.
Couple of questions. One is, would, I get that the governors, forty-two of them got together and have decided to do this, so are all the states ramping this up at the same pace or there are some states that are ahead of us that we can look to see how it's going in the transition?
Some states are ahead of us. For example, Massachusetts, mostly back east, Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, Ohio, Indiana are about a year to a year and a half ahead of us in this. So we are watching them. That's the other very, very cool thing about this. This has never happened in education before where we're all on the same page across the United States. There is just a plethora of resources available on the net that people are putting together questions, units, units of study, whole lessons, all kinds of things that are out there and available for people that we're working to kind of get organized into some sort of usable thing that teachers can use for.
And is this, as I understand, this is something that the individual states are collectively getting together, at least forty-two of them, to do this on their own? This isn't coming from the high, from the feds?
Uh-uh. It's coming from, as it bubbled, it started with these governors and then they put together big panels of educators and noneducators, business people. And then it went through that and then the states chose to adopt them. If they didn't adopt them, there was no penalties or anything like that. So it's not coming from the feds on high, no. Are they benefiting from it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And so the last one will be, what's the story on the cost of conversion? I mean, obviously about staff time and stuff, but is there corresponding funding from the governors or is it like a lot of things where, you know, here's our great idea, you guys are local, make it happen?
There's no funding presently, at least in the state of California, that is dedicated to.
That's a shocker.
No, really.
Proportion of it. Happy days.
No, currently no funding. We'll see what happens. We do know that currently it costs about six dollars to give the CST per child. This is going to cost about twice that.
Right, well, if you have that technology component, there is that. There's also the typing skills, the availability of the technology needed to do the testing. However, if the testing can be done more rapidly.
It can be done more rapidly.
Then you're not losing as many instruction days.
And the information turns around more quickly.
Quickly, so you can get the feedback.
Yeah.
Right, so that.
The one thing I didn't, I didn't tell you guys is there is talk that we will be giving this four times a year instead of just once at the end. So it becomes a more formative assessment, which is better.
Four sounds like a lot, but.
If it's smaller, if it's chunked into four smaller pieces, it's okay. It would become more formative, we would be able to drive instruction a little bit more clearly with it. But there is no funding for that right now, so.
What about textbook?
Textbooks will need to be realigned to this. There are a lot of open source things that are being created that align with Common Core. So that will be an interesting thing to investigate. The state board last week, last Thursday, adopted what they're calling bridge materials. And to be honest, I haven't even had chance to look at them yet, but there are some bridge materials that are out there. We'll need to evaluate if we want to do that, but it would cost money, so.
Jane, how did these other states get that one to two-year good start on this?
These were originally adopted, California adopted the Common Core in 2010. And some of the states jumped right away, they started right away. Most everybody adopted it right in 2010. They jumped right away and started adopting and implementing, the implementation happened right away. In California, that has not happened.
There's also a huge differential between Massachusetts, New York, and here. They get twice as much.
Twice as much funding. So they have a greater amount of funding, they have professional development days and all of that kind of thing where we have not had that opportunity, we haven't had that advantage. We in Petaluma are actually a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of California because we actually started talking about it at least last year. There are many school districts that haven't even started talking about it yet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very exciting. Okay. Two minutes of October twenty-third, is that it all?
Sorry.
I was not here, so I will stay.
Good call.
Okay, comments from the public. I have a speaker card. Under Government Code Section 5495-10.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest relating to the subject matter jurisdiction and school district. In accordance with Board Policy VP 9323, each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy, VPA R 1 through 12, specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. So I have Carl Triola.
Very good.
And Tammy Olson. And please state your name and address for the right piece.
My name is Carl Triola. I'm a cross country coach and track coach at Casa Grande High School, 333 Casa Grande Road, Petaluma, California, 949-54.
I'm Tammy Olson, I'm a parent of Casa Grande student, I'm alumni and a member of the Booster Club.
We're here on behalf of a group of people that have gotten together for the last nine months to talk about renovating the track and field facilities at Casa Grande High School. I've coached there for thirteen years and over that time, okay, the facility was never in the best shape. It's always done what we've needed, but we decided, you know, I got through with Tammy, I coached her daughter, and the track coach at Casa Grande, Jamie Pugh, and the track coach at Kennelwood Junior High, and involved this couple of other parents, Nicole Huba, Jamie Forney at Casa Grande, Rick O'Brien at Casa Grande. And we've all just been working together to get the idea rolling and what we can do to raise money to upgrade the facility because we feel the time is now. It's going to benefit the community at large and we see all kinds of retirees out there. We see people training for marathons, ten Ks, young families out there, the kids from Kennelwood, the kids from the East Side Relays go over there. And just, it's just people from across the community and also the students at Casa Grande as well, they need to have a place to, actually, that they can use, you know, consistently and not have to worry about dragging the dirt back into the classroom and scuffing up the floors and scuffing up the gymnasium, et cetera. So we just decided that the time is now. Since I've been coaching, I've heard it, you know, I'd say at least three or four times, it's like almost there and then something happens, gets pulled away. And, you know, we know economically it's been a rough, you know, years, for many years, you know, we know the district is strapped for cash, you know, everybody is. But we feel there's still, there's still money out there from people willing to help out and so we decided to take the bolt by the horns and start something. So we've, like I said, we've been meeting for about, we got together about eight months ago at the kickoff and we've gotten the word out there. And our first really big event is going to be at Lagunitas Burning Company where we're going to have, you know, where people are going to come and meet and just so they can really get the word out there that people maybe have connections to the community at large. And we want to invite you, if you want to come out and be a part of that celebration that, to get the momentum really going. We've got, we've already got, we've got a big apply for grant to, for the resurfacing of the track eventually. We've got a big grant from the Boosters just recently, they just gave us twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we also have got a few donations from different companies and people within the community that stepped up and donated some money. I know my runners just the other day went out and were canvassing Petaluma with all the signs, if you've been around downtown or East Side, West Side, they put up all kinds of posters announcing this event. And I think it's more of a reality now and people actually seeing, oh, this is something that's going to happen. And I think the benefit of the community is going to be immense and it's going to be good for the school and for the community to have two, you know, good facilities, both Petaluma and the Casa would just be a great thing to point to. And, you know, I've been, you know, the facilities in the area range from Sonoma, which is not very good, you know, up to Rancho, which is excellent, okay? And then there's ours, which is not, it's not the best, we've been out there a while. So we just wanted to invite you to this. We have a little flyer here, Tammy's going to pass out and you can do some information about when it takes place and if you want to join us, we'd be glad to have you. And just thank you for your support. And we've met with Steve, moment about, you know, what's out there, what opportunities we can do and things like that. Anything you want to add, Tammy?
Thank you for your time.
Any questions generally? Or else I should say?
As we said, we can't discuss items. Listen, so thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Report on activities in correspondence of school board members. I happened to attend some county league finals across country, there is a, who was one of our students, finished in first place and the Petaluma High boys won. Various football games, the Veterans Day parade where we saw the Casa Grande band, it's huge, and the Petaluma High bands marched, they did excellent work, students. Petaluma Junior High's school site visit, Mike and Cherry soccer playoffs and sixth grade, so it's been a busy couple of weeks. Item K, agenda approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under administration, human resources, we have a whole item, naming of district facilities. Recommended motion that the board authorize soliciting donations towards the upgrades for the Petaluma High School Gymnasium and the Casa Grande High School Stadium and Track with potential naming rights per BP 7310.
Actually, this is just a.
It's a just, it's not.
Yeah, it's a whole lighter. So we're asking for authorizations, so you have, if you want to take it.
I need a second.
I'll say.
Okay.
So the board passed in the last year, BP 7310, and a component of that board policy allows for going out and seeking donations and looking at the naming rights as part of those donations. In regards to the two projects, we have Petaluma High School gym that needs new bleachers. With new bleachers requires that we add eight additional doors for access for fire and life safety as well as a new floor. We're anticipating that the cost, architectural estimate on the cost of that is around six hundred and ten thousand dollars. is around $610,000 plus soft costs, which could take that easily to $750,000. At Casa Grande, we have plans now developed for Casa Grande, and we do have the grant for materials, the recycled tires for the new track at Casa Grande. That's about $80,000. Anticipated cost of doing the track alone approaches a million. We add trying to make the necessary or the recommended improvements around the track as far as concrete work to make the facility cleaner and nicer for football as well as track. That project will probably be a million dollars, maybe excessive a million dollars. As you know, we spent our bond funds, currently I think we have about $200,000 left, and I recommend that we keep those funds for the oversight of these projects and not, we can't afford to do those, these projects. We could go out for another bond, but as opposed to going to the taxpayers, we have the opportunity to look at people who might desire their corporate name or potentially, you know, somebody who would want to see a family name and contribute significant funds towards these projects. And, you know, be happy to answer any questions. I know the board saw the policy a few times taking action, and, you know, this was the biggest change to the policy was the opportunity to provide naming rights for contributions towards projects.
Have you had any discussions with any companies or other individuals that...
No, at this time, I wanted to make sure, you know, before I go out and say that this is a possibility, that the board is in agreement that, you know, providing the naming rights in probably, Casa Grande Stadium, for instance, you would probably put it above the score clock and maybe on the press box as well. For Petaluma High School, you have the opportunity on the far side of the gym to put the name of the gym company. And I would look at, you know, dependent on the size of the donation, reaching an agreement that, you know, the naming rights would be for X amount of years as opposed to being continuous in nature. So that, you know, one example would be maybe one year for every $100,000 contribution. Looking for companies, local companies, that this would be an opportunity for them. Every time, you know, an activity is going to occur in the gym, and it's mentioned in the paper, it's all I did, they're going to say, you know, it's at, you know, blank gym at Petaluma High School. Or the, you know, track events would be at the corporate name stadium at Casa Grande, so they would be getting advertisement as part of this. I don't seek doing this as a bid. I think we have more control over the process, trying to go out and solicit names. But we could have, you know, multiple people willing to contribute to a project and bring this back to the board. Part of it would be an agreement that would have to be reached on the naming rights. And that's not totally spelled out for, but it talks about, you know, negotiating an agreement and determining the terms so that if the company goes out of business, or whatever you would change, you would be able to, if they sell, we'd have to indicate it for, you know, there'd be an opportunity for consideration of the new name of a corporation if the name of corporations changed, but it wouldn't be automatic as part of that. And we work with council to build that agreement as part of soliciting a new name.
We already have a criteria, there's certain types of...
No alcohol.
Yeah, that would already be like a doubt.
And that's, I mean, that's, of course, that's in our current policy. I know Hillsborough is looking to go to some of their local companies, and as you can imagine, they're probably, they're probably not going to have the no alcohol component to that policy. You heard this evening that, you know, one of the corporations out there is logging these. I would recommend that we not do that in our community relative to naming a facility. And I want to make sure, I mean, that's what the policy says, and that's how we present it to the board, that we want to keep with the policy, not look at revising the policy, but not allowing logging needs to that because of...
And that's nothing against logging needs.
No, not at all.
No, they're, they're a good...
Connotation of community sponsor. Having, we're on a high school, naming a high school gym or stadium is not something that I would recommend.
Well, I don't know what the community sentiment is about it in the event, but I don't think it would hurt to go out there and see, solicit, if you will, what interest there is, and we're not binding ourselves.
Correct.
We may find out there's greater interest in ways that we may find out it's...
There's nothing... And, you know, the economic times is a challenge, but again, you know, they would need to see it as two, you know, contribution to the community, and second, an opportunity to have their name out in the public.
Right.
In a very public way.
Right, and supporting a local, couple of local endeavors. Yeah, I don't know what the interest would be, you know, but I think it's worth certainly pursuing.
Yes.
And I don't think that the community would be, you know, shocked or surprised that we would be looking for, you know, other sources of funding to help these projects.
Lots of programs have, if you look at the Little League fields, there's all those banners of all the different businesses that have helped. I mean, essentially, we already have that, that's on our two high school campus.
And if there's not a large donor out there, we could be looking at a number of small donors and just a plaque thanking the donors, but not to the extent that you're going to name the facility for them.
Well, I think that's how Petaluma High last got renovated.
Petaluma, in 1990...
Used to just do, but yeah, that's how that got done.
In 1990, it was a combination of donations of work and donations of money to renovate the field and turn it into sandhill. And our two, two, you know, natural turf fields are in excellent shape. And, you know, years like this, when you have a relatively dry football season, they stay in great shape. We've also seen wet football seasons where, you know, the mud's this deep when the game starts also. But there's no desire this time to make it a synthetic turf field. It's not being, it's not a push from either the football teams. I think if we had the resources, they would probably welcome it. But it's not high desire. The real desire is to make, you know, the Casa Grande track usable for track... Are you even hosting track meetings these days?
No, no, we haven't hosted a track meet in four, five years, I think.
Five years, and that's not satisfactory, and that's not something that we can continue to act.
If you're half as smooth as I think you are, you get the turf companies to donate the turf field and exchange the naming of after the turf.
Acting turf companies. It'll be a challenge, but it's one of those...
It's a shot at it.
And also, you know, we have people who are working on it right now, and they can help with the meetings and share the desire. And we have a company that's already done the preliminary work on the design who also has been very involved in the development. I think quite possibly we could tie it on to our facility as well, right? I think to our...
Are there any schools of yours, could you say, down in Marin County or in East Bay, that have successfully had a, we call it a corporate naming program?
Well, I, I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with Rick O'Brien, who's talking about, you know, there's a lot of that out there that not so much in our area, so...
Well, so I'm talking about maybe if you contact superminims, and we're not competing with anybody, but if you contacted someone over in East Bay or something, and said, oh, here's, here's what we did, and here's, here's what really works, just to maybe shrink the learning curve and avoid stepping in and seeing if it's viable.
You know, that's what I had asked Rick O'Brien about, because he's out there, you know, as the athletic director, and, you know, he came up with some school stackings. So that wasn't...
I was thinking something a little bit more Californian. And not parochial, because they go their own way, but a public school district that maybe had some success with that, which we...
So I'll be looking for that as we move forward and put it out there.
Okay.
All right.
Evaluation, and this is happening with a lot of districts in the county, and it's being overseen and coordinated with the Sonoma County Water Agency. So they're trying to bundle a bunch of energy projects together and then go out and sell bonds to fund them. And so basically, the savings that you would save, the savings that you would get by renovating these projects, like, for example, we have single pane windows out at near school that shake, rattle, and roll. So you can imagine that, you know, there's a lot of energy that would be saved there. So we would utilize those savings to pay for the bonds. And hopefully, the district would have little to no money out of pocket to make these improvements. And so it's a great opportunity to look at it. So this company's coming in at no charge to do this, and then we'll go from there. That was going to be my question.
Zero. Zero's always good.
Don't we have a kind of an energy audit company under contract anyhow?
Well, we have a company that, that basically does it through changing habits in the use of it, but not changing the facilities. So this company, so using an ESCO to come in and do the analysis, and there's no cost as much as said. And they will do a preliminary, give estimates of savings, see if there's enough savings to fund bonds. And then the second part is that if we say, yeah, we're on board, at that point, then we'll sign on for the bonds, and they will go to bond quality plans for the project where they're guarantee, the ESCO companies then guaranteeing the savings that will be paid upon. The windows are a good example, but they might come back and say, well, the windows are going to cost, you know, $200,000 put in sideways, maybe more, and it's going to save you $125, so we would have to come up with a difference.
Right.
As deferments, but right now it's more than we've been able to accomplish without deferments.
So. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, agreed authorization, recommended motion that the board authorize an agreement between the Petaluma City Schools and Sartain's Menu.
Sub moved.
Sub moved.
So Mr. Sartain, who makes a fabulous Sartain's sauce, has decided he would like to walk away from his business and donate it to the Casa Grande High School as an entrepreneurship-type program. And so we have a teacher over there, a group of teachers, and they have, you know, they're interested in taking this on. And so basically, this is transitioning his business over to Casa Grande and the students taking it on and basically developing a marketing plan and a whole business scenario around it. They wouldn't be manufacturing it, there's already a place...
Some company.
That's right, who has the secret recipe. And so they produce it, bottle it, bottle it and whatnot. And the students would be selling it and working with distributing it and the like.
There's no assumption of existing accounts payable or ongoing liabilities?
Yeah.
I know a little bit about transition businesses. If it's losing $100,000 a year and I give it to you for a dollar, it's not a big, it's not a great deal.
No. That's, that's part of the process that we're going through is an evaluation of, you know, debts, inventory. According to Mr. Sartain, there is no debt. There's inventory and, you know, minimal accounts payable based on what's been produced. So that's part of the evaluation process. I know the district would be wanting to take over somebody's debt to debt. So this is in the informational stage right now, that's what you're looking for? We're, yes, and we're gathering, we're gathering the information to make the transition. And so this would be having your blessing to... Would we be able to review this before?
We're going to review the agreement, right?
We could, we could...
It says authorize an agreement.
Yeah, at this point, we're looking at authorizing agreement that will be worked out with school college legal services for the district to take over the main action or the production of the product. And the debt, I mean, there's assets that will be coming to the district, but then no debt other than payable for product that's already available and the district will receive.
Well, there's a few ways to... I want to, it's, here's a turnkey operation, and you make that deal, or it's just assets, like we'll buy the asset or accept the asset in the state's donation. So you uncouple it from the liabilities, which is always better for the recipient, obviously. But I don't know what the donated intent is, or, you know, it's like someone gave us a house for a million bucks or $100,000, or mortgage, and we'd do that deal all day long, or if it was split, we wouldn't. And so it just has to be an agreement. I would say we'd almost want to review the proposed agreement unless we're just going to trust our superintendent.
But I just feel like if there's any financial...
Liability.
Liability, I would like to see it again before...
If there's financial liability, you'll see it again, but at this point, I don't believe that there is based on...
Yeah. What we meant today. What we can do is we can bring it back when it becomes the actual donation process. We would have that documentation.
That would be great.
Yeah, I want to see it again.
To accept. That would be great, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item eight, Petaluma City Elementary School District Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Recommended motion that the board appoint Laila Stoll as the PTA school site council representative to serve on the Petaluma City Elementary School District Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee.
Sub moved.
Sub moved.
So we have the parcel tax oversight committee, and we had a parent who was no longer eligible to represent, be a representative on the elementary side, and so this is replacing that parent. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item nine, award of bid, recommended motion that the board award bid number 0312 refuse and recycle pickup and disposal services for the calendar years January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2017 to Petaluma refuse and recycling.
Sub moved.
Sub moved.
So we submitted a request for bids, and we received one. Luckily, a bid came in at a great price, which is 15% lower than what we are currently paying, and it is the current provider who submitted that bid. So that was very, very nice for them to lower the current price for it. Okay, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10, Resolution 121307, recommended motion that Resolution 121307 board education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts increasing school facilities fees on residential, commercial, or industrial projects pursuant to Government Code Section 65995 be adopted.
Sub moved.
Sub moved.
So the district was notified that there was the opportunity to raise rates, and so we hired a consultant to go out and do a nexus study and determine whether or not the growth within Petaluma would, would support us, putting aside funds for additional facilities for the growth of additional students in the system. So it did come back with showing that, and so we are increasing, proposing to increase the rate. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Various reports for information regarding to ask questions, I don't know. No grants, and I don't see any more letters. Okay. We are going to now adjourn to closed session. Item L, conference with chief negotiator, and then we will be coming back and reconvening, if you're welcome to stay, and report out of action taken in closed session. Thank you all for coming.